Welcome. Yes, we're starting about 60 seconds early, but we have no more seats. And the view is beautiful.[12.86][12.86][laughter] So could you come every time? It's kind of fun to look at. So thank you all. We'll call to order the Fort Mill Town Council regular meeting for December the 12th. Thank you all for attending and joining us. If you have a phone or iPad or something that could ring while we're in session, would you please put it on mute so that we can give you our full attention and you ours, and you us? So with that, we will stand for our Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have an invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could hear those children. Thank you. That just gives me cold chills. Heavenly Father, we're in a time and a season of joy and of giving. Please help us to recognize that we wouldn't be here without the gift of life from you. Our community is a wonderful place to live, and we are thankful for those in our community and those that we work with. Please smile upon us and give us the right actions and words to do your will for the good of our community. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Council members, you have seen the minutes from the November the 14th Town Council meeting. Do we have any changes, adjustments, additions, deletions? I'm running out of adjectives.
I make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. Public comment pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill. Any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Davy, do we have anyone signed in?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. So we'll start with presentation number one, the 75th Annual Fort Mill Christmas Parade Winners. Chiana Hester. Before Chiana gets started, I would like to extend a very public and heartfelt thank you. Chiana has worked endless hours to ensure that the celebrations and events of our community are as finely organized as possible. I thank you. My hat's off to you. She lost her voice during the last part. That's probably because we couldn't, it's like herding stray cats trying to get us in order. But thank you, Chiana, for your professionalism, your warmth, your organization, and certainly your patience. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to say I have a wonderful team to work with. We have incredible town staff. That's amazing, and they just carry out all the details of everything so perfectly, and I just love them.
Alrighty then.
So we will begin with our 75th Annual Fort Mill Christmas Parade entry winners. We had so many incredible entries, and our judges had a very hard time picking the winners of all of them. But we will start tonight. Yeah, Mayor, if you would like to come on down.
It's the most reindeer I've ever seen in a meeting.
So we will start with our most creative award tonight, and that is Classical Conversations of Fort Mill. And tonight we have Mary Newcomb and Natasha Fossis here to accept that award.
Thank you so much for participating and doing all the wonderful things that you did to be a part of our parade, and we're so glad it didn't pour on us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next, and our next one is the Most Holiday Spirit by Cycle Hubs. And tonight we have Kat, Teresa, Travis Carter, Stevie, Cara, and another Cara, and Santiago, Santiago, and Steven here to accept that award.
Hi there. You're reindeer antlers.
He's the one.
Well, I'll get closer.
Well, I must say, this is joyous all the time, not just tonight. But thank you for what you contribute to our community, and we're so proud that you joined us for the parade. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best meal, too.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our next award is for Best Golf Cart, which was the Nason's Frozen Winterland. And tonight we have Kristi Sophie Cooper Nason, and then Ethan Monday, which is a friend that helped them out with that. It was an incredible golf cart.
That was good. Very good.
Who got to drive?
I, well, I mean, she tried. She had to save, so.
Wonderful. You did a beautiful job, and we're so grateful for your participation. The parade wouldn't be anything if it weren't for folks like all of our members tonight. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
And our next winner is for Best Car by Griffin Tire and Alignment. We have Michael Rodrick here tonight to accept that. They have that beautiful 1931 Ford Model A pickup with the Christmas tree in the back. It's amazing.
You'd drive me next to her. That was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's one of the best parts of the parade to see something that's been so lovingly cared for. Thank you for being a part of that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And our next award is for Best Holiday Theme by Therapy Resource Group. And we have Erin Gaskins here tonight to accept that award. And they had the truck in float with the gingerbread land on it. It was adorable.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Congratulations.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Hope we'll see you again next year.
And our Best Walking Group category was Miller Street Dance Studio. They could not be here tonight, but they are very excited to win that award.
They're always good. They overperform. We thank the Miller Street. We thank all of you. This is such a beautiful event for our community. In 75 years, it's never been disappointing. So thank you so very much for all that you do to bring that spirit of Christmas to downtown Fort Mill. We love you.
I've got some Ronnie's men everywhere. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Bye.
Before we leave this item, I would like very much to thank staff and Chris Sardelli. I thought he was here.
He just went out.
He's getting pictures, I'm sure, but I thought having the professional photography and the quick turnaround on getting that out on our social media, so those that couldn't go sit in the rain, or like my mom, they didn't going to come out of the house, they were able to share in that, and I loved it. I thought it turned out really well, and hats off to staff for that. Thank you so much.
Are the videos today? I actually watched a little bit of that.
I know. Isn't it great?
It was great.
Technology is great when it's great. It's not when it's not. Alrighty. Old business item number one, second reading. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter 6, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 2, Technical Code, Section 6-26. Adoption of standard codes so as to adopt the most up-to-date versions of the following codes, including all South Carolina modifications, the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Existing Building Code, International Fire Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, National Electrical Code, International Property Maintenance Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and International Performance Code for Buildings and Facilities. Chris Pettit. I know that you don't have anything to do with it, but I would like to think common sense would say we always ought to have the most up-to-date ones, but you're following the letter of the law and making sure that we read all that and that we adhere to it, and I thank you. What would you like for us to do?
Mayor, this is basically, the state of South Carolina adopts the latest versions of the International Building Code with modifications, and then requires municipalities to therefore subsequently adopt that code. So this is second reading of that adoption for the laws that would go into effect January 1st, 2023.
Great. And council members, that's January 1st, 2023, which is only a couple of weeks away. These are codes that are provided to us by the state of South Carolina. They have been accepted by the state thereby. I'm sure we will too. So I need a motion for the second reading.
I make a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll second it.
And we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Alright. Chris, do I get to read them again next time? No, there won't be a next time. We'll just start dittoing, you know? Tonight, we do have an executive session. Please note that council may take votes on items discussed in executive session. Our executive session items tonight are receipt of legal advice relating to potential contractual matters with Lennar Carolinas LLC, and discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual matters with Crossroads Development Partners LLC. If you would, and you're seeing this later, there are specific rules that will allow us to go into executive session to discuss confidential proprietary information, and any vote that we take has to be in public. So we will have a vote to go into executive session and one to return to. So I will ask for that motion.
Make a motion, we move into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Alright. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. And we will return. Please let the record reflect that no vote or decision was made in executive session. I would like to have a motion to return to regular session.
I make a motion, we return?
I'll second it.
And we have a number of seconds, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Alright, we're back in regular session. New business items. New business item number one, first reading. An ordinance further amending ordinance number 2021-22 so as to change the effective date for the rezoning of York County tax map numbers 0201701064 and 0201701065 from PND Planned Neighborhood Development to MXU Mixed Use Development. Chris Pettit is our expert. Chris?
Mayor, thank you. And I'll actually just go ahead and speak to the next three new business items.
Okay.
They're each relating to the Crossroads Project that council approved back in September, I believe, of 2021. Since that time, the due diligence period and thus the ordinances have been extended once, back in April of 2022, we did extend the effective date of the ordinance. At this time, the applicant and developer is asking for a second extension of these three ordinances to allow six more months to take ownership of the property, which would then put these ordinances as effective. So again, relating to the Crossroads Development Project, these three ordinances go into effect when Crossroads Development Partners takes ownership. They're asking for six additional months to do that, to extend their due diligence period.
And prior to motion and vote, I think it's important, because this is a taped session, I think it's important to the general public, this is a project that we have discussed over and over and over again, and have fine-tuned and worked hard with those folks that have a desire to work inside this community. They've been very good to bring us information when asked, and this is not something we would be making an uninformed decision on this evening. So if you don't hear a lot of discussion, it's because we've already been over it quite a few times. Okay?
Just confirmation, no changes to the way it was, other than the date, correct?
Correct. No changes other than the six-month extension of the effective date.
Mr. Pettit, what would be the date, the extension date will be through what? I didn't see that listed.
Six months from January 6th.
July something.
July something?
The expressions are priceless. Alright.
If there's no other questions, I make a motion, we approve new business item number one.
Second.
Alright. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, alright. New business item number two, this one's lengthy, please bear with me. An ordinance further amending ordinance number 2021-24 so as to change the effective date of the ordinance authorizing the entry by the Town of Fort Mill into a development agreement with Crossroads Development Partners LLC and North Carolina Limited Liability Company, J. Max Henson LLC, Max Henson Jr., J. Max Henson III, Marshall Odell Henson, J. Max Henson Jr. as custodian for Adam Jason Henson, Raymond Lee Sarr, and Kristi Lee Sarr, Lanell Simmons Bailey, Judith Alicia Kimbrell, James Wayne Lancaster, Ronald Allen Vogel, John W. May Sr., and Brenda B. Tyson, and Ronald H. Bailey, Christopher Robert Blanton, Bonnie James Blanton, and Kenneth Dwayne Blanton, and Thomas G. Hare for properties located at York County tax map numbers, map num. Yeah, map numbers. There you go. I've got to go call lottery numbers after this. 0201701064, 0201701065, 738000059, portion of 738000094, 738000077, and 738000046. And authorizing execution and delivery of an amended agreement. Chris, you have just spoken with us about this. Council, does anyone have any questions prior to call for the motion? Hearing none, I call for a motion.
I make a motion, we approve new business item number two.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. New business item number three. An ordinance further amending ordinance number 2021-25 so as to change the effective date for the annexation of York County tax map numbers 738000059, portion of 738000094, 738000077, and 738000046, containing approximately 36.71 plus or minus acres located on Fort Mill Parkway and off Hare Road. Chris, again, this is the third item in three that you had talked to us about at the first, first motion. Any questions on this, council? Hearing none.
Make a motion to accept new business item number three.
Second.
Have a motion to accept and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Alright. New business item number four, yay, doesn't have any numbers, but one. An ordinance to redraw the Town of Fort Mill council districts based upon the 2020 decennial census. Chris Pettit.
That's a new word for me.
Thank you, Mayor. This is 10 years in the making. So it's, it's been a little while, but staff has been working with council since, I believe, April. We've been working with the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. So the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office is nice enough to work with municipalities and counties to, after every census, work to redistrict wards or districts, depending on the language of the municipalities, for free. So we've been working with the state agency, and they've first developed a benchmark report. That report basically outlined the need for us to do a redistricting. We had, we have four wards in town. At the benchmark report, one ward was twice the size of all the other wards, just based off the growth patterns that had happened over the preceding 10 years. So that established the need for us to go to the drawing board and establish a new ward map. They have since done that. There's a lot that goes into drawing these new maps, and I've provided you all with hard copies in your packets there. I have one on the map, or on the screen here. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of rules and regulations that go into where these lines can be drawn, you know, the wards have to be contiguous, they, you know, have to minimize the division of voting precincts, they, the regulations go on and on. There has to be, or the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office recommends a difference, a maximum differentiation of population of 5%. We are actually at, I believe it's a little over 3% difference here in the wards as far as population currently. You know, a lot of our communication with the state was to minimize breaking up of established neighborhoods, and they've done a great job of doing that. The geography that they use to draw these maps is somewhat limited. So there was one instance where the Waterside at the Catawba neighborhood, there's really no way for it to not be broken up into two wards, but we've done as much as possible to minimize that. But otherwise, most of our established neighborhoods are all located within one ward. Each ward does have active projects, you know, future projects that, you know, hopefully over this next 10 years, they're all kind of growing at a similar rate so that we don't get to a situation where we were previously with one ward having all the growth and the others not having as much. So tonight, we present to you an ordinance. It is first reading of an ordinance to adopt this as the new ward map for the town. We will, should this move forward, publish this on our website and publish the date of a public hearing for the January meeting. And then, following the public hearing, should second reading be approved, this would become the new ward map for the elections that would take place. It would go into effect immediately, but ultimately, for the elections that take place in 2024, this would, this would be the ward map that it was based off of. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, either on the map or the process.
Council?
Mr. Pettit, I'd like to say thank you for all the effort you put into this, and also for the data that you provided. I think it's interesting to see, so this is based on the 2020 census over the past 10 years, and the Town of Fort Mill has grown 126.8% during that time period, which is quite astounding. And I would say in the two years since that, there's probably continued growth, and we know there's some growth coming. So that explains greatly why this is necessary and why we're out of adjustment. But I thought it was really good to have the understanding, it's the first time I'd been through this, the background data and to look at it. And I know there's a lot of pain trying not to break up any areas, because some people get confused on where they vote. You know, I voted there 20 years ago, so that's where I should be voting. So I just want to thank you for your time and effort, and the effort in putting this out, and I think it's a viable solution. We've got a lot of growth coming in certain areas, we know, but this will be done, again, in 10 years, it might look totally different yet again.
Yeah, and following approval of this, we'll send it over to York County. York County handles all the elections for us, so should there be any precinct changes, you know, should there be anything like that, all of that would be taken care of well in advance of the next election, so we would be able to communicate that along with the county well in advance to let folks know.
So if peoples would change, their zoning precinct would change or whatever, how do they get notified?
That would, that would come through the county. We're not the only people doing this. Rock Hill, every municipality really in this area, most municipalities that are, that are growing, are going through this redistricting process. So it's something that'll be communicated heavily from the county side, because they handle a lot of the elections, but certainly from the town side, we will as well.
And I do think it's critical to point out that there are many, many regulatory oversight and rules, and addressing this, we don't get to draw those. So I'd like to make that perfectly clear, that our staff provides information, and then this happens for us. So thank you for all the hard work, Chris, and the understanding by council.
I think it's really interesting, when you look at this map, you see the doughnut holes, and why it's confusing to know whether you live in the town limits or not, when you see all the white that's mixed in with the colors, colored areas. Chris, you had mentioned that Waterside, we couldn't avoid not splitting it. Can you elaborate just a little bit more for those watching, and so that they know we tried to keep it all the same?
Population-wise?
It's, so the geography that, that is behind this, and you can sort of see it in the red outlines, I believe, actually, maybe not, but this is made, each ward is made up of multiple census blocks. That is just a geography that the census used to, to report data. So a census block is one of their smaller geographies, it might be the smallest geography that they have.
It is.
The, in the redistricting process, you're, you're not able to break up a census block. So the reason that Waterside is, is split up into multiple districts is because there are multiple census blocks that make up Waterside, and they're, they're tied to other areas that if we did put Waterside in all of one district, Ward, the blue ward, one, would become well beyond the, the population of all the other wards. So in, in having to keep things within a deviation of 5% or less, it's not possible to keep Waterside, which is a very populous development, it's not possible to keep it together without totally skewing the rest of everything. And it's, and it is because you can't break up those census blocks. I really tried, and...
I was going to say, translation, it couldn't be helped.
I really tried, and they said nowhere in the nation has that been done. I said, okay, well, that says enough.
We're not being the first.
So in Ward 1, or where Waterside's split, and it picks at 4, is that just the main, I mean, I can't see these roads, is that just the main road that goes through Waterside? And so the left side's in one, and then the, the sparkling brook, is that it? I just can't see the road. And the right side falls in Ward 4?
That is the main road.
Right.
You, you do have the differentiation to where all of the right side, when looking at a map, of White's Road is, is all together. It's, it's the other side that is split up into multiple wards. Unfortunately, we, we don't get to assist in drawing the census blocks. They don't take into account neighborhoods in that process. So you kind of deal with the blocks that are drawn by the Census Bureau and how things shake out. So it's just kind of how the cookie crumbled on this one, and there really was nothing we could do about.
Yeah, so there's, there's two that are, Sparkling Brook is a good example, because you've got everybody on one side except for two little areas. You're saying there's no way, because that's going to make it confusing for those people. Their neighbor votes in one district, and they're going to vote in the other.
So it...
We don't get a chance.
I'm just trying to say that, but...
We, there were several iterations of this map. If you put all of Waterside together, it breaks up other neighborhoods. So it's like a domino effect. This was the, the best of the iterations as far as getting it there. You know, and the town currently, you know, the wards define where the ward members live, but everybody's voted at large, and certainly, so, you know, something else to consider. You know, we're all working as a team here, so.
And everybody votes for everybody. You just have to leave in the ward you run in. We'd be reminded of that.
Yeah. The main piece of the geography is defining where council members live for those four ward seats.
Davy, when we look at our communications plan for 2023, can we make sure that we have scheduled announcements, even if it's just reposting from York County Elections Department, about these changes, that we're not relying solely on them? That we're making sure we're getting the word out that this has changed?
Absolutely.
Make sure we're coordinated with them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the first...
Davey, when we look at our communications plan for 2023, can we make sure that we have scheduled announcements, even if it's just reposting from York County Elections Department, about these changes, that we're not relying solely on them, that we're making sure we're getting the word out that this has changed?
Absolutely.
Make sure we're coordinated with them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We approve the first reading of the ordinance to adopt a new district map.
Thank you. I got a motion and a second.
I'll say.
Thank you. And again, we, we've done the best we can with what we have. So this is what we've been asked to do. So I have a motion to accept and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you. Talk about making hot dogs. New business item number five, first reading and public hearing. So we will do the public hearing first. An ordinance annexing a portion of York County tax map number 709000057, located on Tom Hall Street behind 1193 Tanawa Court with approximately plus or minus .776 acres. This is in Ward three, which is Ben Hudgens' ward. And Penelope Karagunas is our expert on this. With that, we will open the public hearing.
We have someone signed up there.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Steve Trull, 1177 Tanawa Court, Fort Mill.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Good to see the council again. Thank you everybody here for, and Penelope for working with us to give us enough. Everybody should get back there again. I want to go ahead and annex this property unless allowed. And honestly, I don't know what I'm gonna do with the property yet. We have to work on that with the overlay. And I understand the zoning restrictions and we want to be, whatever we're gonna do, certainly will be in compliance, whatever this council would allow and certainly Penelope. So I think once we have a rezon, we can spend more time to try to tell them something that we'll do what we wanted to do, just give us room for what we have now. So consideration, I really appreciate what y'all doing for us.
Do we have any questions from Mr.?
So there's no plan at this time?
I, I really don't know what I'm gonna build there yet. If I decide to build a permanent structure there as it stands now, I don't know. So I'm looking at options. I mean, certainly we're contemplating some things, but there's a lot to go with. We're trying to figure out a good way to make sure we do something that's good. We don't want to take away from what we already have. So we want to make sure we do something that works well with what we have and ultimately fits well with our town. I mean, we care dearly for this town and we want to make sure what we do is done in good order and everybody's good about it. So we want to make sure we take time enough to, to give thought to, certainly I'm gonna probably aggravate Penelope even further, to just figure out what we need to do to make sure that we can do something that works well for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Mr. Trull is the only one that has signed in. Anybody else hearing none, we will close the public meeting. Penelope?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Trull.
So like Mr. Trull stated, this is basically a proposal. He, he does not have a use for the proposed site, but he would like to annex a portion of the property that fronts on Tom Hall Street. And the designation zoning, if council chooses to annex, would be the highway commercial district. The property next door is in the town and is zoned highway commercial. So this would be the same zoning classification. Staff, you know, basically like Mr. Trull stated, all the uses that are allowed in the highway commercial and also the Tom Hall overlay is actually the regulations that Mr. Trull's gonna follow, not, not Penelope's regulations, but the actual zoning subdivision rules.
Now, Penelope, is that, so there's the overlay. Now, looking at the, the lot, are we doing the, the entire lot which backs all the way up to Kowana Circle or you said-
So in your packet, there's a plat that Mr. Trull has gotten done from R. Joe Harris. So the tract two that fronts on Tom Hall Street is the parcel that is gonna be annexed if this board chooses.
So it's half of the overall lot?
Yes, it's .776.
Yeah. So that would be, and so the other, the other half of that lot would continue to be residential or whatever with that neighborhood?
Yes. And I've, I've met with the zoning administrator with York County. And so it, the existing house meets all the regulations for York County. So this is actual, it will now become a nonconforming lot for the county.
Yeah. My concern is anytime you bring highway commercial into a neighborhood, it changes, it has a chance of changing the neighborhood. So, okay, that's why you're gonna do half the lot. Got you. Okay.
Questions for Penelope. Please note that .776 acres does not qualify for a development agreement. So this would be strictly based, any development on the property would fall within the criteria that Mr. Trull has acknowledged, that it would have to follow what the criteria is within that.
Highway commercial with the Tom Hall overlay, which is even more restrictive.
It is.
Yeah.
Did this one through planning?
It did, and it was recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Unfortunately, we had three members absent that night, but four of them did make our approval.
With no further questions, I will ask-
I'll make a motion. We approve new business item number five.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you so much.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Mr. Trull, that's gonna be good guidance. You're coming down the frontals. So now you got a limit of what you can. So that's a good, good way to deal with this.
I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks for working with us.
Absolutely. That's what patience looks like. New business item number six. This is also a first reading and public hearing. So we will begin with the public hearing. Excuse me. An ordinance annexing York County tax map number 706000008 at the intersection of Banks Road and Wolfpack Trail containing approximately plus or minus .06 acres. This is in Ward four. Chris Moody and Penelope is our expert. We will open the public hearing. Davey, did we have anyone signed in to speak?
No, mayor, we do not.
Okay. We're gonna, anyone needing to speak. We're gonna close the public hearing. Penelope?
Yes, mayor. This property is contiguous to the town limits and is eligible for annexation. If you guys remember, in, in the past year, we had another very small piece of parcel that is contiguous to the overall commercial development that's in the town, that Mr. Garcia's would like to build a daycare center. So he finally was able to obtain title of this small portion of the corner of Wolfpack Trail and Banks Road. So this is just asking to be annexed and give the highway commercial designation. And it was recommended approval at the planning commission meeting.
Good. Daycare. All right. Questions for Penelope?
Penelope, the plat on, of the package you gave us is actually on page 14, looks like is actually the, the drawing of the plat. Looks like the highlighted lot is not the edge lot. It's like it's the lot above that. So I was a little confused. Is, is that the blue one right there is what we're really talking about?
Yes. So it's the below one.
So if you look at the plat that was provided, the outline is the lot, or maybe it's just the way it's shaped.
Yeah. He's gonna have to do a combination because basically he's gonna combine it with everything on there.
And he owns that whole corner now?
Yes.
How much, what's the total of, of all that that he's acquired?
Oh, gosh.
It's, it's about 3.45 acres.
Okay. So you have enough property to do something with because you're not gonna do much with that .06.
Yes.
That is correct. The, the intent of, of buying that corner is so that the total, so that the total enclosed three street land in the middle of it is, is, is for a single purpose.
So the overall, Mr. Garcia knows today that there is gonna be a, an actual daycare. And then there's still room for other commercial development, but primarily right now, the portion that he does know with the highway commercial is the, the daycare center.
And that lot you already own is already highway commercial?
Yes.
Now, where does right beyond that converge to industrial?
I believe so.
I'm just curious, where does highway commercial end and where does industrial?
This, this property.
Right. This is the last.
Everything south of this is industrial.
And everything north of this, on the other side of the bridge is residential?
No, highway commercial. Right.
We've got the school just on the other side of the parkway. You've got U.S. Foods on the other side of Banks.
No, I'm talking about going up Banks.
Going up Banks is residential.
Yeah. So it's, this is, I'm just trying to think where the cuts are to make sure that kind of makes sense. Okay.
To the other side of Wolfpack.
Yeah. But I can appreciate the need to square up your project-
Yeah.
And that it would be consistent usage and with the daycare and the zoning is appropriate, correct?
That's correct.
So this is pretty simple and straightforward.
It, it is.
Okay. With that, I need a motion.
Need to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Say it.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
All righties. So, yes, thank you for being here. All right, counsel, we've had a, we've had a good year. This is our last videotaped meeting for the year, and I think it would be wise for us to consider all the good work that's been done this year. We're coming off of several very successful events, which were the last long line of successful events this year. We have listened carefully to our public and we've made accommodations when asked to help. It's certainly been good to be out of the COVID shadow somewhat. I'm exceedingly proud of how good our town looks. We continue to operate even though hiring is probably the most largest challenge we have, along with rising costs. We have done the unthinkable and we've taken action to ensure that we can pay our employees a wage that makes us competitive with others. So I think it's been a big year all in all. We have three new council members. It's brief life. We are doing good things for the right reasons. So as we wrap up this evening, I would encourage you to think in those positive terms and anything that stands out in your mind. We'll start with Ben.
Just a couple of things. You, you mentioned us being fortunate enough to be able to be elected to council. That was quite a big honor. I know Chris and I can speak for him. We worked in the different capacities in the town for, you know, 11, 12 years or something like that. But to make it to this level, I think was very, it was very flattering. It was a big honor. I think even after all those years of being involved at those different levels, being at this different, a deeper level, I guess, I'm, I continue to be impressed by staff and your, your knowledge and your ability to, you know, the skill level that it takes. And I just, you wish that everybody could see that. I, I think that's something that I really wish everybody could see the work that's done behind the scenes. It's very impressive. Very honored to be a part of that. And I know, I think I brought it up last time, a cohesive group of seven that we are able to talk constructively and, and reach, you know, decisions up here and have intelligent dialogue and, and get along for the betterment of not what's best for us personally, but what's great for us as, as a whole, for the town of Fort Mill and everybody that lives here. Keeping that in mind. But very, very honored to be here, doing, doing things with all of you, everybody and for everybody watching. The second main thing is don't get caught up in the buying of presents and the gifting of presents and all the business of decorating and the hustle and the bustle. Just please remember the reason for the season. That's why we're, we're doing it all. I'm, I'm fighting it myself of getting caught up in, you know, we gotta go shopping this week, I gotta take a day off, we're gonna go shopping. That's, there's a reason we're doing this is, is to be close to loved ones and, and honor Jesus' pardon.
Thank you. Alan?
Just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Hudgens was saying, again, our first full year, our, our first year on council, I'm extremely proud of the, of the work that we've all done. Again, we do not agree on everything and that's okay, but we have good, we have great dialogue and we, we work things through. Davey, Chris, I'm thankful for, for everything that you guys do, seeing now this side of it. It's, it's remarkable, the work that you guys do to, to, to keep our beautiful town running as smoothly as it does. We just come off a great Christmas parade. Rain held out for the most part. It was, it was a great event. First time being in it. So it was kind of, kind of neat seeing it from that side and getting done in time to see the rest of the parade afterwards. So the only, the only thing I would say with that would be if after the parade next year, we can have a crew come through cleaning up trash. I picked up probably 200 of those little wrappers with the, the candy canes all up and down Main Street. And they're, you can follow the parade route. So I'll even, I'll volunteer to do it as well. I'll take one side of the street and Ben will take the other side of the street. So, well, yeah, and we'll just pick up wrappers. But besides that, it was, it was a great event. And like I said, I'm just, I'm, I'm so proud to, to be up here and, and the honor to, to be with you, you folks here. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa?
So we have been very blessed this year. As a town, we've been very blessed by a lot of activity. We say all the time, I'm very thankful for the problems we deal with and not what some other communities have. There are good problems, good challenges, opportunities for us to grow, not necessarily residentially, but opportunities to grow personally, professionally, and really engage with the public so much more. When you look at the projects that have been accomplished this year by staff, I think it is worth us making sure. We have an end of the year report similar to what we've talked about at the chamber meetings that the school district does with a few highlights of what got completed this year. And I'm apologize as I get older, the days go by quicker. But when I think about the water tower and, you know, the fire station, I think was last year, a year before, but wastewater treatment facility, Banks Athletic Park, amphitheater, there's a lot of large things that were able to be accomplished this year. And we don't even have the facilities planned yet that has other things that we're planning to do. So I'm excited about what this council and staff in town will be able to do in the coming years. Also think it's worth mentioning, just in closing remarks, it's also great to know that the Gamecocks beat Clemson this year too. Hopefully we'll continue with that.
Amen.
Take that off my list over here.
Yeah, boy.
Thank you. I hope everybody has a great Christmas. Again, school is in session until middle of next week. And then you will see a lot of kids out there. It gets dark early. So there'll be a lot of kids during darkness. So just be careful. And as Spencer, remember the reason for the season. Even Gamecock fans and Clemson fans will agree on that.
All righty then. Ronnie?
I'm just proud this year that, that we did move the Christmas tree lighting up to the park because there was so much more being able to be done on the stage than we could have done on Main Street. So much more activity, so more, so much more kids and drama and dancing and everything that was on the stage that we could not have been able to do on Main Street. And the amount of people that showed up on Main Street and at the Christmas tree lighting. And I was thoroughly amazed at the amount of people that turned out in the rain to watch the Christmas parade. And it turned out real good. Just proud of our staff and we know y'all will continue to keep doing this proud.
Thank you. Chris?
Which one? Okay, okay. Didn't want to-
Y'all talk together.
... face too. So, no, I, I love this time of year. It's some getting to, you know, go through that tree lighting. It's like you're there, but, and it's July 4th, you know, you're there, but you have to kind of pinch yourself that you're there. Like this is happening. This is just a, a good time. And, you know, we are very fortunate to have the things that we have. I say that and y'all probably get tired of me saying that here in Fort Mill with the infrastructure, with the roads, with our nice Main Street. There's a lot of Main Streets that would love to have what we have and the staff that we have. We couldn't, all this couldn't happen without you guys. We thank, thank you for everything. The new guys, welcome. Glad y'all made it almost through your first year. So good to have you on board. And I know, just a quick side note, my father, his last meeting as a county council person is Wednesday night and he's retiring after 28 years. And so I've always been around politics since I was 15 years old. And one thing he always taught me is that son, you always need to do what's right and treat people like you would want to be treated and always do what's right. You know, I've always looked up to him and respected the role model he's been in my life. So, but I love you, Dad, even though you can't hear this. So.
He can watch it on replay though.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Mr. Wolf?
It's been an exciting year. So glad to have had the opportunity to continue to serve the community. Very thankful for all the staff and the residents who give so much to the town, back to the town that they love. Be thoughtful for all our many blessings. Safe travels. Enjoy the time with your family and remember the reason for the season. We're all, we're all very blessed. We need to remember that as we face, all face challenges. But we have a lot to be thankful for. And thank you for your, everybody here that's working together to do what we think's best for the town. for the town.
And as closing remarks, I reiterate each of your thoughts. Staff has been critical in getting us through the last several years, not just performing well, but getting us through. And that's always, thank you for keeping us safe, thank you for guiding us properly, thank you for your smiles when I just want to cry. And gee, that happens sometimes. We've lost people in our community, the community that Chris Wolf and Ronnie and I and any of you that actually grew up here on this soil. I'm local and proud of it because the people that made our community great still have ancestors here and heirs, and I still hear them in my head. And I love that we can bring that to Fort Mill. If you haven't just ridden in on White Street and just ride down to the foot of Main and look at the beauty of our town, that represents the love and the light that we all see inside our community and inside ourselves. So with that, I hope we all do have a blessed Christmas, remembering the reason. I love each and every one of you, and it has been a pleasure to serve with you this year. Next year, we'll take it by the horns and try her again, right? So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Say it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much.